Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward and you shall be heard. Please let me get comments to three minutes. State your name and your address.
I'll do it. You want me to?
Please step to the podium. Yep, so you'll be recorded.
My name's James Dibble, 1-875-063rd, just up the hill from you. Kenmore on since 1980. Before I make my comment, I just want to truly thank you all for providing the service to the community. It's appreciated. My comment in under three minutes is relative to your goal, seven or 12, it looks like seven was stricken through, provide a community atmosphere that is inclusive, family-friendly, and that fosters a sense of belonging and pride. That sounds kind of corny, but it, boy, it sure should be a cornerstone of every community. And I've found it to be so in Kenmore. Since I was in Kenmore before we were a city, I looked at the King County codes as being a source of advice and to fall back on when there were discussions amongst the community. One of the things that I've noticed that Kenmore has not established, or embraced, or brought into the codes, is policy for solid waste. The yard debris, the limbs, the tree wind throw, all those things that don't sound too important until... We originally lived on 73rd by Swamp Creek, and we moved up the hill to what I call the Old Summit. And it's a great community, one that tends to have single-level houses. But when I moved in, on one side, the family decided that they were going to throw their limbs and debris into the backyard that was not monitored. And then we've got, on the other side, a family that they don't live in the house the whole time of the year, so they have their yard clippings in a big pile back in the back. Now, neither of those are overtly against the Kenmore codes, but the only thing that I found that I could fall back on when I was dealing with briar bushes that were arcing over an eight-foot-tall fence was to advise them to have them read the public nuisance ordinance. Now, when you come to a neighbor and you call them a public nuisance, it's not really a good way to start yourself out with a conversation. It's certainly not inclusive. It's off-putting. So that's what I'm asking, is that the commission consider some type of an adaptation, adoption, whatever word is correct, of the solid waste recommendations that are in the King County ordinances. I think I'll stop there, because I could go further, but there's many more citizens that want to speak, so. And as I'm proud to have a 70-foot Douglas fir, I can say that that wind throw sounds kind of funny until you see limbs going down in your yard, so it's actually an important discussion.
Thank you. Is it James?
Yes, or Jim. Jim.
Thanks, Jim. So it sounds like something that's suited for a docket item proposal that would go to staff, and they would include that for consideration on a future agenda. Is that right?
We can do. I mean, whether it needs to have an amendment to the comprehensive plan, if it does, it would fall within the planning commission's purview. If it doesn't, it might stay with the council.
Right.
And again, we can also do some checking to see if there's anything in the, you know, current regulations about, you know, yard clippings or tree limbs crossing over a neighbor's fence, or something like that. So I think we'd have to do some research on that, but we could certainly add it to the list right now.
Okay. So Jim, you might want to follow up with city staff, the community development department.
I suppose as...
Come on up.
One brief request.
Yeah.
And this was because I was trying to bring my brain in scope with your plan. Would you be kind enough, you have a wonderful webpage that's a front page that explains why you folks came together about the planning commission, but I just got an email that said, "Hey, look, the planning commission is coming together, and here's the plan. Take a look at it and see if you have any comments."
Right.
What I'm asking is, I've always found it to be very beneficial, if on the first page, there's just a scope statement, maybe just two sentences out of what you already provided, and a link back to that great webpage where you say, "Hey, we're here to help the And the underlying thought that I was having when I was trying to bring forward this idea of, the exciting idea of solid waste, is that as the commission, what I'd like you to just think about is somehow advising the council to, on a cyclical basis, to go back and check what other, certainly Kenmore, I mean, I even took a look at Lake Forest Park, and they don't have that exciting issue of solid waste, but I'm wondering if there's... Obviously, we decided not to adopt that particular section out of King County, but I don't know if there's a secular plan-do-check, a kind of a look back at how are we doing with the ordinances that we, the council, are issuing. And it may be there. I just wanted to bring that forward as a side thought for you good folks.
Thanks, Jim.
Gotcha.
You might want to also talk to your own independent legal counsel on some of those issues. You mentioned the word nuisance. There's sometimes a private cause of action between private property owners. And obviously, something that encroaches on your property may give rise to a private cause of action, too.
Yeah, that's the name of the ordinance, is public nuisance.
Well, there's a state statute. There's one for private and for public nuisances.
Oh, okay.
But anyway, that's something to think about.
Yeah. The way it's written, basically, if you can't see it from the road or a side street, it's publicly obvious.
Right. Right, so that's, you may be on to it. That may not apply, the public nuisance statute, but you may want to talk to a lawyer. There are other statutes that may apply to your facts.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay, I got you.
Anyway, I'm not here to give legal advice, but it sounds like you might want to get some.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking back at the codes.
Yeah.
I mean, I did have an open discussion, it's just... Well, I won't bore you without it came out, but it's, I think it may be legally proper to call it a public nuisance, but it's certainly not very inclusive.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the May 5, 2015 minutes?
I vote to approve.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, zoning code amendments, tree wind throw. May I invite to the presentation table the Director of Community Development?
I wouldn't be offended if recommenters were supposed to exit. I wasn't sure.
You have a choice.
Okay.
You don't offend us.
It's fine, yeah.
A little surprised, but otherwise, you're quite welcome to leave it your convenience.
Before I start, maybe I could just maybe mention to Jim, maybe you want to contact the city's code compliance officer and describe your situation, see if it is an actual code compliance issue? That might be another approach.
Ultimately, I did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Again, I presented the issues to the neighbor, and it was emboldened public nuisance, so it kind of set up for a dotted book right from the outset, so.
Okay. I just wondered if you checked with our code compliance officer?
I did.
Okay, all right. Just checking, sorry about that. Good evening, Planning Commission. Nice to see you all this evening for a little break. I'd like to introduce Ashley McCully. Ashley has been a graduate intern in the Community Development Department, and although you haven't seen her, she did do some work on the comprehensive plan for us. She recreated and actually created some new maps for the comprehensive plan. So all the maps you see in the comp plan, we've got Ashley to thank for that. And the other project that Ashley's been working on for us is on tree wind throw. So Ashley did a lot of research on this topic, and as you recall, this item was put on your docket by the council this year to look at this one specific issue for tree regulations. So Ashley did the research and gave, the agenda has some information in there. She'd also like to do sort of a brief PowerPoint this evening, so if you could, you want to put your screens up, so you can actually see as she goes through the presentation. So what we would like to do is have the presentation, have an opportunity for planning commission discussion, and then at the end of that, we would like sort of some direction about which way you want to go to proceed with these regulations. Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Ashley.
It's up. Hello? Good evening. Thank you for coming. The purpose of this presentation is to bring four slight modifications to the current tree regulations with City of Kenmore, and to strengthen protection for neighboring property owners and future site owners against wind throw, the process that uproots a tree. Do I have to click? Do I press this on the laptop? I will be going over the background, urban forest management best practices, current tree management and protection regulations that revolve around wind throw, and then followed up with our staff recommendations. Sorry, hold on, there's like technical difficulties with like shooting forward through the slides. Sorry about that. So as I had mentioned earlier, wind throw is a process that uproots a tree. And in my research, I found that there are five big risk factors that that's based off of, and that's the first one being root disruption that occurs 1 to 2.5 times the radius of the tree branches. The second is tree species. In the Pacific Northwest, the only tree species that that's mostly applicable to is hemlock trees. The third factor is whether a tree is deciduous or evergreen, which means whether it sheds its leaves annually or never. And then the fourth factor is height relative to neighboring tree, and while tall trees are at risk for wind throw, the concern is when trees are removed that leave single trees standing taller relative to the canopy around it. So it should be looked at, the height relative to the neighboring tree. And then the fifth factor is whether or not a tree is part of an interior shelter or a grove. And when trees are removed from an interior shelter or a grove and they're left as standalone trees, it creates more risk for severe wind throw damage. These are pictures of storms that have caused tree wind throw in cities around the U.S. Some storms, it might take a huge storm like Superstorm Sandy to create such an effect, but it can also be from moderate to mild storms as well. It really just depends on the health of the tree. And so in my research, I looked at a lot of urban forest management best practices, and it said that although there are multiple factors, as I just mentioned, that contribute to root system failures, which lead to trees falling, cities can adopt tree protection ordinances that mitigate the potential of such failures. The first one is looking at the drip line and the critical root zone. Most cities really, they'll say no encroachment to the drip line, and the drip line is really just the furthest reach of, the reach of a tree's furthest branch. But if you look at the pictures, the critical roots zone goes two to three times beyond the drip line, and if you only look at drip lines, and any of those roots are damaged within that radius, you can still have potential damage. And so one of the best management practices is to increase critical root zone protection and sometimes creating larger buffers. The second best practice is root boring versus root trenching. Trenching is cost-effective and easier to do, but it has more long-term effects to the health of the tree and the neighboring trees it shares root systems with. And so urban forest management practices recommend root boring, which goes, you would move utilities and anything that might, where trenching would be required in a development process. It's encouraging you to go underneath the tree instead of cutting it. And if you look at the image, trenching is on the left, and you can show where it cuts into the roots, whereas trenching, tunneling and boring on the right go underneath the roots, and they don't disturb them. Another one, as I had mentioned, is protecting groves and interior shelters. This is a great way to reduce wind throw potential as a means to try and reduce the amount of standalone trees you have in existing development sites. And one of the last ones I looked at was the implementation of retaining walls, and anywhere around a tree where the grade changes during construction activities or development, it increases disturbance of root systems as well. And if you build rock walls or tree wells around the trees where grade changes, it prevents damage to the root system, and tree walls are known to ensure be a good mitigation factor for wind throw. And so I also scanned what some other cities are doing. In Gay Harbor, they're really focused on protecting perimeter trees, groves, and interior trees as to not disturb the neighbor's property, and they're also looking at expanding the critical protections for maintaining critical root systems. Port Townsend is the only town in Washington I've seen take the strongest approach, where they have their own full section on wind throw. And they require that every single tree occurring in new development must be wind-firm, which means there must be no significant root damage. Georgia, Acworth, Georgia, I saw they increased their buffer zones, and they did 50 feet, which seems like a high number at first, but the 50 feet covers the highest point of an expanded critical root zone, and they enforce that on the boundary of a site. And so if a neighbor's tree is within that 50-foot zone, it's not to be disturbed at all. And they also require tunneling versus trenching. And then the one thing I did see that was different, that I thought would be interesting to point out, is that in Brennan, Oregon, they enforce the four-by-four-by-four rule, which means if any four tree roots, four inches in diameter, within four feet of the tree are cut, the tree should be removed because of increased wind throw failure potential. And I was just saying, if something does happen and it's cut in development, it's safer to get rid of the whole tree than expose it to the potential to fail down the road, harming either their property or the neighbors. So after all the research, and I'm looking at how Kenmore tree protection is currently set up, and how it relates to wind throw, the things that kind of relate to it are the requirement of a tree survey, which is to be done if you have a large plat or a large site to be developed. And the tree survey identifies the exact location, conditions of existing trees, including the name, location of trees to be removed, and the critical root zone in the areas. This survey is conducted by a qualified tree professional, and it's followed up with a tree protection plan where they identify what's to be done with said trees that they want to remove. Within these tree protection plans, priorities are identified to, on what trees need to be protected on such sites. And the first priority is for groves. The second is for individual trees that have a wildlife habitat. The third priority is for trees or groves within required setbacks. The fourth priority is trees sheltering interior trees on adjacent property from wind damage. And the fifth priority is trees that provide a buffer to reduce sound levels. Also, within this tree protection priority is if the trees lie within a tree protected area, the critical root zone protection needs to be enforced. Following up on that, we propose adding a new section to strengthen wind throw protection and draw a little bit further on the current priorities. The new section would be called tree wind throw prevention, and it would be in three phases, assessment, evaluation, and review. Assessment would be no different than the survey being conducted, and it would still include trees to be removed, the names of the trees, the location, and whether or not they're in a critical root zone. What would be added was whether or not the tree has wind throw potential based on the risk factors I had mentioned earlier. Part of the assessment would also be the evaluation to be conducted by a tree qualified professional, and it would also look at, it would also seek to evaluate if there is increased wind throw potential for trees on neighboring lots within 50 feet of the closest trees being removed in a development site. Prior, or after the assessment and the evaluation, it would then go to Development Services for review when they grant the permits. And in the applications, if an applicant's tree has been identified that it has strong wind throw potential, the applicant shall identify measures to reduce wind throw. Some of those measures could include the examples I showed you, root boring versus trenching, putting up rock walls or tree wells if the grades to be changed, expanding the critical root zone, putting the fence around the critical roots during development to ensure that it's not hit, and protecting groves, as mentioned earlier. Lastly, I'm sorry, I missed that. We met with Development Services after creating this memo, and the remaining policy issue we found was that there's still a gap in the regulations, as single-family homeowners are not required to apply for a permit or provide a tree protection plan for trees to be removed below a certain number. I believe, depending on the size of the lot, they allotted a certain amount of, a certain number of removal per year. If significant trees lie on these lots, which they very well could, their removal could still trigger the potential for wind throw. We are seeking feedback as to whether or not we should revise the code to include new permitting requirements for all trees in which the applicant would be addressing wind throw if certain criteria were met. For consistency purposes, staff recommends an approach that would only require such an assessment for wind throw on a permit if the risk factors described earlier are applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Where are you going to school?
What?
Where are you going to school?
I just finished, like last January, I went to grad school in Boston at Northeastern.
Okay. Welcome.
And she's going to be, going for a, studying for a PhD?
Oh, sorry, yeah. I'll be starting PhD in the fall at U-Dub.
I've heard of that. School. Good. Good. Any questions, commissioners?
So, I just want to... So?
Please.
Okay. So currently, I just want to make sure that I understand the couple of things. So is this part of what I think of as the kind of critical tree ordinances? I mean, I know that, or significant tree ordinances, excuse me?
It used to be the significant tree ordinance when we incorporated, and then in 2006, we adopted our own regulations.
Okay.
Tree management protection.
Okay.
And what that does is, rather than just focusing on retaining one large tree, it kind of focuses on retaining a number of trees.
Right.
And there's a calculation in the code that you have to retain so many tree units per acre.
Okay.
There's a minimum standard, so that's kind of what we, that's the new rules.
Okay, okay.
And so...
And this would fall within that?
This would fall within those regulations, which typically address when land is developed, so for new plats.
Okay.
And where, as Ashley said, there is a gap, is for, you know, a single-family homeowner. When the tree management rules were presented to council originally, they wanted to give homeowners sort of a degree of flexibility to allow them to cut a certain number of trees based on the size of the lot each year, which is great. It does give that flexibility, but it then, as Ashley said, leaves a gap. So we were still trying to make sure that there was some flexibility for homeowners, and we didn't want to make it too onerous, and so, which is why we would recommend sort of filling that gap, and only requiring assessment if there are risk factors when a single fam, when a homeowner wants to take down a tree.
Could there be risk factors beyond wind throw? I'm just thinking of, you know, critical slopes and things like that, because that's...
There are, there are a different set of regulations that sort of restrict removing vegetation from critical areas, whether it's on a steep slope, in a wetland, or things like that. So there's sort of a different set of rules that would protect vegetation within critical areas.
And those do apply, then, to regular homeowners?
Those do apply.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Mike?
In part information for my other commissioners, and also in the interest of full disclosure, I have definite personal involvement with this issue. I lived for the last 20 years on a critical slope area just above the lake of Oakdale Point. When we bought the house to the south of us, it was about a three-acre wooded lot, which had deer trails through it, all sorts of animal habitat, which was one of the major reasons we bought the house. We've enjoyed it for a number of years. About a year and a half ago, the owner cleared it from the slope down to bare ground. As a result of that, we, of course, all the neighbors around it began to worry about what is the wind throw potential for us, along with the slope concerns of having all of that vegetation removed, including the trees and everything else. As a result of that, I personally was not, we bought in someone to assess that, an arborist and a naturist came through, gave us a recommendation that all of our trees on our lots were in extreme danger for wind throw, particularly removing that south exposure for us to the door from there, given that most of our winter storms come up the lake, as you know, 30, 40, sometimes 50 miles an hour, that sheltered us long. As a result of that, we all then did the only thing we could do to preserve our trees, which was to call in a tree expert to come in and do some wind sale reduction. It's been two years now, so far, so good. As your report says, you know, five to 10 years down the road, it's hard to know what's going to happen. How did all of this happen? Well, the people who own the property, and I give them every right, they've owned the property for many, many years, to do and develop it the way they want. They originally went in for a permit for a three-unit development on that property, which we got approved for two, but because it's divided into separate lots, they were able to declare it to be a single property. And there we go. So there it is. I hope this doesn't happen to anybody else. I wish we had this discussion two years ago, but I think this is an issue particularly for Kenmore for the dwindling amount of urban forests that we have. And I'm not going to recuse myself from any discussion of what we had here, but if anybody on the commission field that I should, I would...
Okay. Any comment? I don't have a problem with that. You just have a point of view with experience. I don't see a conflict of interest. I don't see a conflict of interest. Excuse me. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Please, Carol.
Put together some kind of an ordinance that changes or fills that gap in that you're talking about, which would presumably prevent a situation like Mike just described. One of the things that I'm concerned about is having the city have too much jurisdiction over private property. But I really can tell you that from living in a neighborhood where they pretty much came in and clear cut, but they did leave a few huge trees, that 30 years later, we don't have any protection. I mean, they weren't that big when we all moved in. But so, it's this, it, I realize it's about new development, but if we're talking about wind throw, then are we also going to talk about maintenance issues or will that be something that would come up later? And reading through your research, Ashley, which by the way, you did a great job of finding examples of the things that you wanted us to understand before we came to this meeting. The one thing about it is nobody can really predict what the situation will be, rainfall, you know, all the other conditions. But there is one thing that I really do think should be addressed and that is we're talking about tree protection experts versus arborists and a qualified tree protection professional. I think that phrase needs to be defined really specifically so that we don't have a conflict of interest. And if we're really trying to protect trees, then it needs to be the expert, the trained person who knows about trees. And I read through what the city already has and there's actually about six different people that would be part of that tree survey. It isn't just an arborist, it's, you know, landscape architect, it's multiple things, which probably when your neighbors decided to clear cut to prep for dividing their property or whatever, they probably were not required to have those experts help them. So, what do you think the main part of the gap that needs to be filled is? If you could describe that, that would be helpful.
When we discussed it, the main part of the gap was that single-family lots aren't required to apply for a permit to remove a specific amount of trees a year. That might be two or three. And as Mike had said, if they had three lots and you can remove up to two to three a year, that's nine trees. And they don't have to apply for a permit. And so, in closing the gap, we weren't, we're not just looking at new development and then should we expand it, new single-family developments? It's anybody who wants to essentially remove any tree. And if that's on a single-family lot, then it would be assessed if they, you know, those five risk factors were present and if so, then we would be asking the single-family homeowners to provide, you know, a professional assessment before they're given permission to remove the tree.
So, would there also be a fee that the city charges to manage that? Or would, would it already be covered under, I mean, what would the permit fee be? Has that been determined or is that part of what would be determined? I removed two trees off my lot this year and I actually would like to remove a couple more, but I'm more concerned about doing it right. So, I did hire an arborist to come in and assess what the best route would be. And obviously, we weren't going to take down a big tree ourselves, but I'm curious about that.
Right now, it's exempt from a clearing permit if you have a certain sized lot and, for example, if you can, if you have a lot which is up to 10,000 square feet, you can take two trees down per year.
Right.
No permit required.
Okay.
If you want to take down more than that, then you need a permit. So, it's not saying that you can't do it, you just need a permit to do so. I don't, off the top of my head, recall what the cost of a clearing permit is, can certainly bring that information back to you. So, there would likely be, you know, it could be a small fee for a clearing permit and I'll bring now the fee schedule next time so we can share that with you. But I think what we're trying to do is say that you wouldn't be required to have a tree permit or pay a fee unless there were the risk factors present and then you would have to go through the assessment process.
But are you just determining that if you want to remove more than two trees, then it becomes a risk factor?
No, it would be if you were going to take trees down and you, by taking those trees down, you would have, you know, one or more of the risk factors that Ashley described, then the response back would be, you know, by doing so, you could be, you could cause wind throw, in which case then, the city would then say to the homeowner, you need to then go and hire a professional to assess taking these trees down, that they would not cause wind throw. So, you'd only have to do that if those risk factors were present. So, if you had two very small trees in the, you know, in the middle of your yard, which would do nothing to anybody around you, you could go ahead and take those down.
So, so this, this would go into effect regardless of the number of trees then? Right now, we have that two-tree threshold basically for a permit, right? So, what you're talking about, the wind throw issue would be regardless of the number. So, if you're, if you want to take down one tree, I'm just trying to figure out what the proposal is. If you're trying to take down one tree and it creates a wind throw problem, then you would need a permit and an arborist, is that right? Or?
Only if, only if you were, if there were risk factors involved.
Yeah. Okay. But it goes down to one tree, I mean, it goes all the way down to one tree?
Well, it says, yes, because there's two trees, so it could go down to one tree. We haven't really, I don't think we've got that far, have we?
I think it was just evaluating or looking, because some trees on single-family lots are significant trees that would cause an adverse effect. And so, we didn't really focus on the number, it was just any removal of a significant tree on a single-family lot, should we move forward with trying to close that gap.
So, if somebody had a tree that they wanted to take down on their lot and they just had a single tree, they would have to come and get a permit and part of that permitting process would to, be to hire an arborist to assess if taking their tree down would create a wind throw effect in their neighbors, to surrounding neighbors? Is that, is that what you mean?
They wouldn't necessarily have to get a permit. Again, they'd have to, if somebody would call and say, I want to take this tree down and then there would probably be a number of prompting questions on the checklist of some kind, you know, is the size of the tree, you know, looking at the same kind of, by doing this, would you affect, you know, A, B, C, D, E? And if the answer is yes, then it would be, you now need an assessment. Again, we've not kind of got through the level of detail to figure out what that would mean. All we're kind of bringing forward to you tonight is that there is a gap right now. And the question then is, if the planning commission think that we should be consistent for whether it's new development or an existing single-family home lot, then we would bring back, you know, a set of regulations. And that would address whether we'd recommend a permit, whether it would be for changing, you know, all trees, any trees. So, again, we haven't brought those regulations to you because this was something that, you know, was new and it would kind of be a little bit expanding the scope, well, not really expanding, it would be addressing wind throw consistently rather than just for new development.
I'm generally supportive of the idea of closing that gap and making sure that it's consistent on new development and single-family homes. I'm curious though, in, in practice, how that would, would play out. So, I could see an example where perhaps one person, let's say they have five trees on their lot and then they want to take down two and they find that removing two is a risk for wind throw. But then if they, so then the other option might be that they remove all five. Like, do we have a policy in place that protects trees? Like, in general, I guess in a situation of like new development, I know there's a certain requirement, I think, for them to retain a certain amount of trees. So, in that instance, will the city push back and say, no, you can't just remove all these trees because they become a risk factor? Like, you have to retain these trees, therefore you have to change your development plans?
I think it was, if you were looking at the priorities that, about how, the priorities for tree protection, there are a number of them, you know, whether it, we want to protect trees which are more in groves, we don't want to leave just a single tree standing. So, I think when you were reviewing the tree protection plan, that's where you would really want to first of all, take a look at the priorities for tree protection and does the tree plan that's submitted, is it in line with those or not? And if there's a way to sort of adjust it, sort of say, you know, really, you should be retaining these five trees rather than the ones that you're proposing because it's more in line with the priorities. I think that's what we, sort of saying that there is the ability to do that in the current code. So, again, that's what we were trying to strengthen, the current code, to say, there's already some legs in the code to protect trees and to, you know, and what we're saying is this is just sort of one extra step. So, it would be, I guess, part of the discussion when a developer comes in is to the best way to protect the trees and still allow development. So, we're trying to get away from, I guess, allowing, you know, clear cut would not be the first answer. You know, it would be sort of down, kind of the step down the road, I guess. So, that's how we would, I guess, go forth and look at it.
Okay.
Mike?
Let's put this into context. So, if I understand it correctly, we have ordinance today that protects surrounding landowners in the case of development, in most cases. It's got some good science behind it. What we have is an exception for single property or single home development.
Right.
So, I guess my question is, if you're dealing with a single-family versus larger development, how does single-family change the science?
It doesn't. That's where there's a gap.
It doesn't and that's part of the gap that we're trying to address.
Less at risk because of the single-family?
And I can see how in your particular case, it was a homeowner who owned a pretty big chunk of land. They knew they were going to try to market it and develop it and they had the freedom basically to take all those trees down and make it more easily marketed to a developer because that work was done, right? So, yeah, I can see why you would want to close that gap. I'm just thinking about the other homeowners that this will affect who might want to take a tree down occasionally or because the trees grow up, that's another thing we're not really thinking about is we're thinking about the situation that occurs when there's development or when there's not good science behind taking a tree down. But what about when homeowners don't take care of their property and they have a risk factor that develops because they won't take care of a big tree? That's a problem too. So, can we include, if you're going to change or fill the gap in to protect trees, but you're also protecting citizens who, you know, live there, how are you going to write these ordinances? Are they just so that we're protecting the urban forest? Because we do want to protect the urban forest, but how do we do it in such a way so that if a homeowner has need of a tree coming down, they can do it without a lot of interference, I would say, from the city?
Well, I think the city is certainly not precluding a tree coming down if it's a hazard tree.
Okay.
So, if it's a hazard tree, the city's not going to say, no, you can't take the tree down. The city's going to say, you need to take the tree down because it's defined as a hazard tree. So, that, that being said, we're then kind of going to the next step, saying if people want to take down a non-hazard tree, a healthy tree, that's kind of where the city's going. Maybe we should be taking a look at what are the effects of taking down a healthy tree? So, there is a distinction between a hazard tree and a healthy tree.
I kind of look at this similar to other mitigation we have with development. If we have healthy trees in a neighborhood and someone wishes to do a development which results in the surrounding trees becoming dangerous, there has to be, there has to be something in there that considers that at the very minimum, needs to be able to have some kind of mitigation if that's the only way out of it. To just to allow it to happen and then have a domino effect where you end up in, over a period of time, all the trees in the neighborhood basically become at risk and potentially dangerous and then the homeowner who's sitting on the sideline and innocent victim is looking at $2,000 to $3,000 per tree to have that removed to save their own house and avoid any kind of legal action.
Right.
So, that, I mean, that's, that's the situation I'm concerned about here. Dangerous trees, yeah.
But the flip side is true too. You might have a homeowner who comes in as a new homeowner and they want lots of sun in their property because they want a garden with sun-loving plants and they start taking trees down because they want their plot of land to have more sun. So, you'd have that situation too. The, the wind throw problem is real, but if it doesn't pose a risk, does the homeowner have to go through that permitting process to be able to take out trees?
I think, I think what we're, we're saying is, no. If there's not a risk of wind throw, then we're not precluding somebody from taking a tree down.
But you may require a permit in order to do it.
It, it depends. If there are risk factors involved, if you have a huge yard and you've got three trees in the middle of your yard and you want to take them down to get some sunlight in and by doing so, it's not going to have any effect on any other trees on your property or any trees on the neighboring property for wind throw, we would say, you know, go ahead and do that.
How would you assess that? I mean, the way to assess that is with the arborist, right? I mean, that's why it seems circular.
And a permit.
So, how are you as the city going to do that?
Jump in here.
Oh, sorry.
Back to raising our hands because I can't keep the order of speaking. And I know Mark's been way impatiently for a while. Go ahead and answer Deborah's question and then I'll give Mark a turn.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
So, I guess the question seems to be is if somebody wants to take a tree down, do they always need an assessment and do they need a permit? And at this point, I guess what we're saying is, we haven't ironed out the details yet, we just know that there's a gap and then we have to kind of figure out the details of, I guess, the simplest way to write the code and then be able to enforce it. And we had this conversation with Development Services and saying, you've identified the gap. If we bring forward regulations, then that department is then going to have to be responsible for either explaining the regulations to the homeowner and kind of putting themselves in, either saying they're going to have to do some initial assessment or putting that on the homeowner. And again, we kind of identified that when we had this discussion and said, we need to kind of be careful as to what we bring forward because whatever we bring forward, you guys are going to have to be the ones responsible for, you know, making it happen and in a reasonable way. So, again, we haven't fully fleshed this out. We just have identified, like you are doing right now, some of the challenges of writing the code and implementing it.
Yeah. I can see that.
Mark?
First, just a question. So, what's been, and then I had a comment after that. What's been the extent in Kenmore of wind throw, like historically, when we've had big windstorms or other events? I'm just trying to get a little better sense of how susceptible, you know, we are community-wide or is it certain areas like, you know, Mike's example right there? I mean, is this something that's, I'm just trying to get a little better understanding of, is this, is this a citywide problem or is it targeted in other certain, you know, parts of the city? So, I guess that's a two-part question. Has it been, has it, has it been a big problem in the past and?
I think, no, you, I can't remember what year it was when we had that awful windstorm.
2006.
Thank you.
We were without power for eight days.
I mean, you could, you could just kind of drive down one Eater Drive or any other street and you would see trees falling or falling all over the place. So, in a big storm, for sure, it's kind of hard to say who's going to have a tree fall down or not. Development is certainly, you know, when new development occurs, again, there's a risk if trees are being cut down or trees are being disturbed. So, it's hard, it's hard to say how many trees or the level. So it's hard, it's hard to say how many trees or the level of extent. I would say it's probably citywide, depending on the, on the situation.
Right, and any ordinance, a regulation presumably would be citywide. It wouldn't be targeted, correct?
Right.
It would, it would have to apply citywide, okay. So my comment was, I agree with Angela and others who said, I see the need, you know, to address the gap and agree with that conceptually, but I think the details are really going to matter in terms of, in terms of, you know, how many, how many trees before the, you know, the permitting is included? Who decides the risk factors? Who's responsible for permitting? So I think that's going to be a really important part of whatever we eventually, you know, get towards. So it's a little hard to say right now, you know, whether support or not, because again, I think the details of how it's done is going to be really critical, so. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mark. I had a couple of questions, and it kind of relates to what Marcus said, because when I read this, I thought, okay, what inspired this desire to put this on our docket? The council asked for it to be on our docket, it's directed to our development, we're getting a lot of residential development, I can see why that may have happened. We're not, we're, you know, quasi-wind intensive area, we're not in Bandon Dunes on the ocean, we're not at Port Townsend on the street of One Fuca. It looks like some of these wind throw ordinances are unusual. So I'm wondering, this, this sort of relates to what Mark was saying, was something unusual happened, or are we getting reckless development in tree, heavily intensive tree areas or something?
I think it, there's, there's been a couple of situations where a tree has come down and, I don't, I think it was probably likely based on trees being taken down on adjoining development. And so that being said, there is, although there are some things in the code, there's nothing specifically to address wind throw. So that's why it seemed appropriate to strengthen the code.
Were they getting complaints from people impacted, trees falling, you know, people who've had Mike's experience or something like that?
There have been a couple of situations like that, yes.
So it looks like the current code imposes some burdens on developers to submit a proposed tree protection plan, right?
Correct.
And that's a, is that a standard cost that cities impose?
A cost?
Want to see a tree protection plan as part of your permit process?
It's, it's part of the development process, so it's submitted along with, with any, whether it's a survey or a critical area report or anything else, it's part of the, the information submitted with the development proposal.
And then one of the code sections says a tree survey is to be conducted that identifies the exact location and conditions of existing trees, and based on that, Development Services says, okay, you can cut down these and cannot cut down those?
Well, it's a two-part thing. You need the tree survey to be done, so you need somebody to go out there and kind of mark where the trees are on the property, the size of the tree, the type of tree, and then from that, you develop the tree protection plan.
The developer does that, bears that cost, right?
The developer bears that cost. So that information is, the tree survey along with the tree protection plan is submitted to the city as part of the development proposal, which is then reviewed by, by the city and either approved or not as part of the development.
We have somebody with that degree of expertise to assess whether this makes sense? Tree is vulnerable, tree is hazard, tree is, is expendable?
Well, the developer has, it's done by a qualified professional. We don't have an arborist on staff. We can, we can certainly, we have a contract to have an arborist review it if needed, but right now, that review is done by Development Services. They review the proposal.
They're just relying on the tree experts, the developer's experts' opinion?
They're relying on the developer's experts and then their own kind of expert, expertise from reviewing the plans, but they're not a qualified arborist.
So now you're saying, Carol, I'll get to you. All right, now you're saying then, we're adding to that, the, the, somebody's going to assess the tree throw, the wind throw potential.
As, as part of that tree protection plan, it's like one additional step would be, not only are you looking at trees on the site, you kind of then have to assess, you know, you have to retain a certain number of tree units, and so you have to look at then, which trees are you going to retain? And if the, if you're taking any trees down, are you causing wind throw either on your property or that would affect the neighbor's property? So it's just kind of, it would be sort of an additional look by the tree professional when they're preparing, preparing the plan.
The one that the developers hide?
Yes.
You've got this new dimension of criteria to satisfy.
It's, it's kind of adding that into, into the tree protection plan requirements, yes.
But that sounds like it's an unusual cost. Like, most cities don't impose this, is that right?
I don't think it, I don't think it would really add too much additional cost on the tree protection plan. You would just be assessing, you would just be doing that as part of the assessment with the tree survey and the plan. It's not, I wouldn't think it, the incremental cost wouldn't be that, shouldn't be that great.
Okay, and then, we're not saying you have to keep more trees, we're just saying, because you said, a certain number of trees have to be kept, is that right?
That's correct.
That's under current code, right?
Correct.
And that's a ratio of lot size to, based on lot size?
It's based, there's a formula in the, in the ordinance. It's not just based on the number of trees or the size of trees, it's the number of tree units. So if you have, a large tree will give you essentially more tree units than, than a smaller tree.
And so is there a policy of saying, we want to have as much tree coverage as possible? Is that the point of it?
There are priorities in the tree management as to where trees should be protected. For example, there are five priorities in there that Ashley went over about where trees should be protected.
But that was for wind throw prevention?
That's, no, that's right, that's in the code right now for when you're preparing a tree protection plan, when that's being reviewed. There are five priorities in, in the regulations as to where trees should be retained and protected. So when you are reviewing, when you're either developing the tree protection plan or reviewing the tree protection plan, those would be where you would start. Does this tree protection plan meet those priorities as they are outlined in code? And then you go to the next step. Not only that, do they actually meet the requirement for the number of tree units? So you've got kind of the, the policy, and then you've got the actual, you know, the math. And then it would kind of be, if you look at those and there's a disconnect, then it would be going back and saying, doesn't make sense. You've either not retained enough trees, or you've not got enough replacement trees, or you should be retaining these trees over here because they're a higher priority for protecting.
So one thing I'm kind of getting at is the point behind the policy, the reason for it, of having a certain number of tree units on a certain square footage, and is that, is, is the policy, is the goal to have as much tree coverage as possible? Is there, is there respect for the amount of sunlight that comes in? Is there, I don't think there's anything about views, because I've brought that up before, but is there, what's that based on, and what, what kind of?
I think in the ordinance, there's minimum density requirements.
Because?
And that's what that's based on.
Yeah, because, I mean, why do we want a minimum density requirement?
So, I guess, so that you retain some of the urban forest, rather than allowing, allowing somebody to just clear cut and not retain any trees. So it's a, it's kind of a balance. Maybe look at this, the, the purpose of the regulations are outlined at the start of the ordinance. So there's A through F.
Is it in here?
I don't know if, did we include the copy?
No, we didn't. We actually didn't put the actual ordinances in, but we, we could go look at them. It's, it's online, so you can read through the ordinances, although you didn't put links in our material for tonight. But I think there is very much in every city across America, this idea that we want to retain trees, and there's lots of reasons why. You can go out and read about them. But because we live in an area where there's lots of trees, I think the concern that all of our Kenmore neighbors have is we don't want to see the remaining tracts of land become deforested and not be the quality of land that it was before. But there's another side to that equation, too, and that is, if, if we did have those ordinances in place for developers, but a private landowner preparing to sell his land decides to take down all the trees, that's the gap we're trying to fill, is that correct?
I think the gap's different, a little different.
I think the gap's a little different. If somebody, today, if somebody did that, if somebody had a piece of, a piece of land and they clear cut it, and let's just ignore the fact that that might be a violation, but if they did that, and then they came in to subdivide that piece of property that had been clear cut, they'd have to plant a whole bunch of new trees to meet that tree density requirement.
Okay.
So I'm, I think we have agreement here on filling the gap and having the staff come back with some details, and then we can get serious about the gap and the single-family residences and the existing trees. I'm trying to get my hands around the development proposal that's on the table tonight, and that's why I'm talking about the step-by-step process and the costs, and, and I know I'm going a little bit beyond that when I say, what's the policy behind the tree density, the minimum tree density requirement? And I think, I agree, trees are generally good. I think we should have some degree of urban forestry, but I think there's a balance involved. There's some areas around here that have so many trees, it's very shaded, and trees have some downsides, too. As you said, when they get too tall, they can be, you know, they're much more vulnerable to wind throw than other trees. They can block views, they block sunlight, so they can be obstructions, too. So I'm, I mean, I'm hoping we have a balanced approach here, and that's why I'm sort of digging beyond.
The, the density requirements are targeting more healthy environmental reasons. They reduce urban heat gain, they reduce sound levels, they're barriers to, 522 is a really loud street, and you remove more and more of those trees, and, you know, there's a reason people live in here and not in, you know, the core of, you know, like Seattle. And keeping density requirements, kind of like if you remove, you know, if you remove to, place to somewhere else, it's, just if you kind of preserve the existing tree canopy, whether it's, you know, you remove to and then replace to somewhere else, you're still kind of balancing that canopy. And I think the density's been in place for a while. This is more, less about density and just protecting every single tree. It's really concerned with adding this element of just assessing for wind throw. People have been complaining about it, they've had concerns, incidents have happened, and it's adding, you know, one more notch in the survey and tree protection plan that already takes place with large development sites. And then the gap we had mentioned was, it doesn't apply to people in neighboring lots who might be a single-family lot, who can remove that tree without any permission, still having the same effect.
Right, thanks, Ashley. And so, I know that my, what's the point of the policy was beyond the scope of wind throw, but I'm curious, and that is something I hopefully will address, but I've asked about in the past, that's why I asked tonight. But I think the mechanics make sense. Mike, one of my concerns was, are we imposing burdens that most cities don't impose, and is there a reason why we might do that? And it, I know, Mike's got a, you know, his experience makes sense, and he lives in an exposed place, more, more prone to the effects of the wind and tree damage, but are we really at a point where we need to be where Bandon, Oregon is, or Port Townsend is, or something like that? I don't know, and I'm trying to find the costs and, and benefits on this. That's where I'm coming from, but mostly, I think it makes sense.
And I, I think that's what we've tried to do, is we're not trying to be, you know, we're basically saying that the tree protection rules are in place right now. We're adding one very minor, a couple of minor amendments to the current tree regulations to clarify this one issue.
Right. Okay, I'm going to go with Deborah, I'll get back to you.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with the, the one addition, it would be on the new developments and things like that. I think that, you know, rubber meets the road when we're talking about the single-family, which we've all said, but, and I'm curious how, I'm getting back to that kind of, you know, critical slope and things like that, how single-family residences, tree removal is dealt with for those issues? I know that sounds like it's a, it's a different set of regulations, but for the homeowner, removing a tree, you know, you're, you're going to touch multiple sets of regulations. So I guess I'm wondering how it's dealt with in those set, in, in that set, relative to what we're thinking about now.
We can certainly bring back, you know, those regulations to kind of describe if there was a single-family homeowner that had, you know, a wetland or a steep slope or something, how tree protection and removal is dealt with. Typically, if they're in a critical area tract, they're protected. So you can't just kind of go into a critical area tract and start whacking trees down. Same thing if they're on a slope. But we can kind of bring back the regulations and show how they sort of interplay with somebody who just, you know, wants to take a tree down and it's outside of a critical area, or somebody wants to take a tree down and it's inside a critical area. So we can kind of maybe bring back those examples.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Mark? This is maybe a little specific, but you mentioned, I think, trenching as kind of a risk factor for roots, correct? I'm not exactly clear how this would address or whether it would address trenching, and is that something that, you know, I don't, maybe that's not a big deal in residential neighborhoods. Can you maybe talk a little bit about that?
Trenching was a risk factor because it cuts through the roots.
Right.
It, we left the section we add on wind throw vague because we, like you said, you don't, like, you want to give them some room to kind of decide how they're going to mitigate it. It's, the ordinance wasn't to be written as, you have to do these, all these specific practices. That would be something that they came up with on their own as part of their, okay, if my tree is a potential for wind throw, this is kind of my plan to prevent it. Or that, that's something that still had to be fleshed out, but we really wanted to avoid putting very specific measurements that people have to do in there. The tunneling and versus trench thing is a lot of times, when utilities are being funneled through places, or if, you know, like fiber optic cable's going to be run through underground, it's better to do it underneath a tree. And that's, a lot of it's really applied to larger development sites when they are laying heavy utilities on the site.
I think, yeah, I think that's a, that's a really good point. I think it sort of also speaks to the kind of need for, there has to be obviously an education component as, you know, whatever might come out of this for homeowners and I guess everyone else, to the extent we're trying to address the problem, letting people know how they can mitigate it beyond the permitting requirements, I think would have a lot of value, so.
Carol?
I guess I'm going to go back to my original concern when I read this, and that is, in the potential direction, we want to go to fill the gap. I think, you know, it's a detail that would have to be talked about and discussed, and obviously, we are not a law-creating board, we're just a advisory board. But I think the language you use can make you feel as though there is an agenda that isn't about people and landowning. It's more about the trees, which I'm all for trees. But I think if we're talking about protecting trees, then trees need to be protected by the experts that know about them. And that's why a tree care professional or tree protection professional, that could mean a lot of different things, but it isn't an arborist. So that, that would be, I know that gets into kind of some technical points, but a person who's got a PhD in urban planning, and they might have taken one unit of information about urban forests, doesn't know that much about trees. They could not walk on a piece of property and assess if this tree is going to have a wind throw problem. They would have to still rely on the expert arborist, I would assume.
Yes.
So the city doesn't have an arborist, you said, but you might be able to require a citizen or a developer to hire an arborist, right?
Correct.
So that language, I think, just should be in there so that everybody's clear who's doing what.
Right, we would certainly kind of clarify as to, I guess, the definition of a tree protection professional, so who then would be qualified to do that report? So you're asking about more for who's preparing the report rather than who's reviewing it? I just want to make sure I understand, okay?
I think it is. I mean, I know you guys don't review reports and not rely on experts as a city, because if you reviewed a report without an expert and later got sued, you'd be in trouble. But that's where the private landowner, I mean, how do you, I, I can see the need to fill the gap, but it- the gap, but it's how you decide to do that that can, it could be a problem.
That's for another day.
It is.
We'll come back with that.
We'll definitely come back with that. So I don't think we're all about just protecting the trees. I think we're looking at this as also, you know, there's a protection of property, it's a safety issue as well.
It is.
So it's not all about the trees, it's also sort of a safety issue in there as well, and it's trying to strike that balance.
Good.
That's good.
Debbie, I think you alluded to this when you were talking about options that a developer might have for addressing tree issues. And you said you're gonna have to plant some trees in exchange for cutting down some trees, and I wanted to, wanted to see, hear more about, that is an option. Is that, how, is that one of the alternatives that developers have? Let's say there's 10 trees, and a number of them are in the area of the property that would be best suited for a house, and if removing, you know, six of those trees created wind throw problems, could they plant trees elsewhere and still most efficiently use that property? Is that an alternative?
Right. So again, it's, when these rules were created, it was not, it was trying to kind of, again, strike that balance between, there are benefits of trees, and those are sort of outlined in the purpose section of these requirements. But it's also sort of recognizing that there's also, when development occurs, that allowing development to occur in the best way, and still being able to at least have some trees on the property. So if you can't retain, if you don't have enough trees to meet that tree requirement, you will have to plant some. If you want to take some trees down, and by doing so, you're still shy of that density requirement, you might have to plant some as well. So it does give developers some flexibility. And again, we're trying to look at, we want those trees retained that kind of meet those priorities, whether they're trees in groves, maybe they are trees that join a property that has some existing trees. So we try, it, again, it's trying to not be so over-regulating that it precludes development. It does give some flexibility.
Yeah, one of the, you know, sensitive topics around City Hall in the last few months has been affordable housing, and part of that to me is, how do we make, how do we enable and regulate development so that houses can be built efficiently and still protect surrounding areas and contribute to, as you know, the mitigation fees and the other infrastructure burdens they impose? So that's one reason I'm particularly interested in that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, Angela?
I'm not, I'm not sure if I, if we fully address Mark's point. I think that the point about tunneling versus boring is really important. I don't think just educating people about not doing that is enough, especially when it comes to utility companies. So is that currently stated somewhere, that we prefer that they tunnel versus bore into tree roots?
No, it's not currently in the ordinance.
Is that something we could add?
Let me, let's go, let me go back and we'll take a look at sort of the rules that apply to utility companies.
Yeah.
Because obviously, they sort of restrict on having to go more in a straight line for, if you're putting in a sewer line or something. So let me take a look at, we'll take a look at those regulations and see how they would sort of apply, how these regulations would or would not apply.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes, Mike?
Just want to make sure we don't lose track of the nuance of this, which is how do we mitigate the damage to a surrounding property owner? And the value they would lose in another property owner's pursuit of increased value for themselves through development, or for some other reason? And I think balance is the key to this. How do we do that? How do we balance that? I would suggest that if you have an existing property owner who's going to be harmed supposedly for the benefit of somebody else, then the balance needs to go to protect the existing right and the existing situation, rather than to create an opportunity for someone else to create new value for themselves, whether that's a developer, or even a single-family owner next door. That's not balanced. That's, that's seizing value from someone else. But in terms of balance and how you do that, I think the question of how do you mitigate the impact is gonna be a critical one. So I think things like tunneling versus boring, you know, what are the options that are out there if we have a developer, whether that's a single-family development or a multifamily development? What are the options they can offer up to a property owner who would be facing a reduction in the value of their property, or their ability to enjoy their property? And I think that's the key. And the decision point there, at some point, has to involve that impacted property owner. And I think they need to have some input into this and understand what those choices are.
So the, the next steps in our approval or our vote here, I want to try and clarify that. We've, you've got some general policy recommendations here?
Yes.
Doesn't look final, and we've raised some questions. So where are we in the process?
I think where we are in the process is, we're looking, I guess, direction is, are the rules that we kind of brought forward for new development, are you okay with those? And we can refine those based on some of your comments you raised tonight. And secondly, would you like staff to also bring back regulations to sort of fill that gap for single-family? And depending on your answer to those two, we are prepared to bring those back at the next July meeting on the 27th.
Okay. So I know Carol had some comments, she wanted more definition, particularly the phrase, qualified tree protection professional. Mike, you had some comments about the burden it imposes on surrounding properties, and where a balance should be stricken. Go ahead, Mike.
Could I just be a little more specific about that?
Yeah.
What I'd be interested in having you explore for us is, we're talking, at some point, you're going to have to have somebody sit down with somebody from the city and say, okay, is this a reasonable plan or not? As part of that process, could you have the impacted property owners sit down and have that discussion? Maybe you could cut through some of that in the beginning. So if they sat down with the city staffer and said, okay, this is what's out here, this is what we think the impact would be, here are the proposed mitigations, is this something that's going to work for you? You might find this a little smoother process than if we did this in a litigation sort of format, where something goes out there and says, we're gonna do this, and you can go out and discover what you want to do about it, or what you can do it on your own. So I guess, again, what I'm looking for, is it possible to have a step in there, maybe concurrent with everything else that's going on, where the property owners get to sit down and almost have a self-mediation session that says, okay, this is okay? And if I think if the city had that input, that might make the process, and a lot of cases go a lot more smoothly, and have a better outcome.
I want to, I want to respond to that, because I see where you're coming from. I think you're raising legitimate concerns. Jim raised some of those concerns, hey, I'm a property owner, somebody's imposing on me, they're doing some things that are risky, could we do something to mitigate the risk? On the other hand, not all properties are developed equally. So if you're next door to a property that hasn't been developed, and yours is, and the neighbor property says, well, I'd like to get the value out of my property that you've gotten out of yours. Unless we're careful, it's possible you're creating a system where the underdeveloped properties are burdened by the wishes of the developed property, and they are doing nothing different than the developed property owners. So I just want to throw that out there. It's, it's, that's where the balance is, where everybody gets an equal opportunity while respecting the neighboring property. So giving the others a voice in how an undeveloped property could be built would be contrary to overriding policies and laws that we already have.
Yeah, and just to respond to that, I hear you, and I understand what you're saying, and I don't think it's unreasonable, that's why I say having some sort of a sit-down mediation session before all of that gets to that point, that might solve a lot of the problem, or might avoid the problem. I don't think, and I'm not certainly saying that we want to freeze out, if somebody owns a developable property, and it's zoned, and they bought it zoned that way, then they have a right to develop that property. And that has something that has to go into the whole consideration. But if, if in developing it, they are going to harm their adjoining property, there ought to, there has to be some discussion about mitigation. We have mitigation for lots of things that we expect a developer to do. We don't give, let's say, fair to developers coming in and saying, you can do whatever you want. I think this is one of those situations where we say, you can't necessarily do anything you want here. We need to sit down and talk about it and come up with a reasonable mitigation.
There's always the devil's in the details. But I see your point, and I think you understand where I'm coming from too. Deborah?
And I think this would address one of those harm issues, the wind throw issue, which is a safety issue. I would hope that any other safety issue, a neighboring property would be notified, or a developer, or a private owner that tries to do something that increases the hazard for a neighbor, that that neighbor would be notified, or the person would be prevented from doing it in the first place. I mean, that's, I think that's the whole point. But I'm reluctant to go the direction of a confab between the two parties, because that, I mean, that would be tremendously burdensome to everybody involved. But I don't know, we don't, I don't, it's a nice idea, but I, yeah.
And maybe we need more detail before we get into the-
Yeah.
We wrestle over it, but-
See, there's always, for, when there's a new development, there is sort of a public notification process for surrounding property owners, they're notified that there is a, guess what, there's a development going on next year, there's usually a comment period at the start of the development, you know, there's a comment period if there's an environmental SEPA decision required, and when there's a notice of decision, there's usually a mailing that goes out to the property owner saying, this, he's issued a decision on this, and you have the right to appeal. So that's usually how adjoining properties are notified. It's not usually that we invite property owners in all the time to say, what do you think about this, this property developing next year? Because the rules that are in place are supposed to then ensure that that property is developed in accordance with the city's priorities for development, and balancing all those rules for protecting critical areas and everything else. So I think that might be going, you know, one step further for mediation on one particular issue. I don't know how we'd get there from here, but I hear your concern.
Also, I forgot my second point, sorry. The second point was around the issue of value, and if something is happening on a neighboring property that affects the value of your property, that's very, very subjective. And, I mean, safety, I think we can wrap our, you know, heads around. You know, beyond that, you know, you buy a property and somebody else owns the one next to you, and things are gonna happen. Trees are gonna grow up, they're gonna block your view, they're gonna build a second story if they can, it's gonna block your view, it's gonna block your sun. You know, it, we can't, we can't control what is going to happen on our next-door lot unless there are, you know, already existing, when we move in, preventive regulations. So I don't, I don't think we can restrict someone from developing their property to the highest and best use, so.
So I mentioned some of the additional refinements that Carol and Michael brought up. I want to let Mark and Angela, you talked about trenching versus boring, is there anything else you wanted specifically to request from staff?
No, I actually like, I like Angela's suggestion to look more at it from the utility perspective. Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, please.
Could I ask that, for that next meeting, that you would tie, I did find all of the city ordinances that were connected, but we didn't have links in our papers that we got, in our packet that we got.
Okay.
So it was easy to find, you're training us well, but it'd be nice if the links were there.
Okay.
I think the Kenmore Code is one of the most, and I'm speaking as a lawyer here, difficult things to read and research that I run into, but that's for another day.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else on this topic? Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. That satisfies that item on the agenda, is there, and that satisfies the content of the agenda. Is there anything else somebody wants to discuss tonight? Any new business, reports? I do want to add to, I don't know if it was Mark who congratulated Deborah on coordinating the I Love Kenmore.
Yes.
Well, and I will give more than equal credit to Eileen Fisher. She really actually took the brunt of the planning. I was her second, so, yeah.
Talk to her credit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Jim, I'll get to you in a second. No? No new business?
No.
All right. Jim, did you want to comment on something?
If I had to comment, would I bring it forward to the next meeting, or may I just keep-
Yep. Citizen comment at the start of the meeting, as you did tonight. But I think there were some things that might be more efficient for you to talk directly to staff about, and force some questions.
I meant relative to the discussion.
Oh, well, we don't usually open the floor up at the end, but if you have a quick thing to say, I'm willing to-
Just, full disclosure, mechanical systems design engineers.
Okay.
I really encourage Ashley's initial point of assessment to be meticulously discussed, because I don't care what regulations come to bore, if the underlying soil is compromised, if it's a steep slope, if it's high gravel, if it's a high water level, as that tree grows up, it's going to increase the area that the wind pressure exerts itself on. So the assessment, I would say, is critical. And that's a landowner that has three different 70-foot, probably original, Kenmore Douglas Spurs, one of them that's forged. So if I can, and I do try to mitigate the ability of the air to go through those very tall trees, but if the soil is not assessed properly, I'll never know what I did was of any benefit.
Yep. Thanks, Jim.
That's good.
Thanks for coming. All right, there being no new business, I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Two weeks?
Two weeks.
We're back on our regular schedule, I guess.